Plating Committee, May 22nd, 2025.
Plating Committee, come to order at 6:01.
Sorry.
Members, C.R. and Sherikas Chair. So first off, public participation. Seeing none, we'll move on to Tiny Homes.
Oh, minutes.
Minutes.
Oh, minutes. Approval of the minutes for the March 6, 2025 Regular Plating Committee. May I have a motion for discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the regular March 6, 2025 Regular Plating Committee.
Thank you, Erin. You have a second?
You weren't here March 6. I can do a second.
Thank you, Vicki. Erin?
Yes.
Vicki?
No.
Clarissa?
Abstain.
So the minutes passed, right?
It has to be a majority, doesn't it?
Two yeses, one abstain, and one no. Does it take three?
I think it would take three.
It has to be a majority of the members present.
So it would be three, correct?
Correct.
So the minutes failed to pass. Next up, we have Tiny Homes. Did we refer this in council to the zoning on Tuesday?
Yeah, I thought it was to count with the zoning because that's what it had to go through.
Okay.
I don't think we actually referred it, though. We did not.
We did not vote?
We did not vote to refer. It was not in our referrals, I don't believe.
Okay.
I didn't think it was this Tuesday, but it was the last time when we talked about Tiny Homes. To send it to this committee and zoning and then...
But Tuesday, we didn't refer it.
We didn't talk about anything Tuesday with it?
No.
And I wasn't here Tuesday, so I didn't ask.
Well, to catch up to speed, instead of legislation for Tiny Homes, we're going to put it in the zoning.
So we should probably wait till the next council meeting?
Yep, we're going to table that one. Pleasant Hill Drive Alley Vacation for a Vita. Any comments?
Kind of confused because Pleasant Hill Drive is actually a street, a drive, and they kept referring it to an alley because they were told that there had to at least be an alley, but it's not an alley. It's an actual street.
Are they just calling it that based on its size?
That's so.
Okay, because it's narrow, right?
It's very narrow.
I could ask that same question.
I believe it's because it's...
And was told that an alley and a street are the same thing.
No, they're not.
I know they're not.
That's what I just told her.
The only reason why Pleasant Hill Drive from where it is north is because at one point, it was only an alley because of the size of the right-of-way. But the southern, east-west portion right-of-way, I do believe, is wider than the 12 or 16 feet for the north-south portion. So it is a dedicated street.
Right.
I don't know why it's not called an alley because of the size of the right-of-way.
Because of the...
It's just the way this town was plotted out, so...
So it is still a street?
Yes, it is a dedicated street.
So it's on my understanding, the part that goes, that connects to Tiffin, is the part that's technically too narrow as of a right-of-way?
It's whatever the right-of-way width is when the city was laid out.
Okay.
It's not going to change now, so...
By definition, it's an alley, but it's named a drive?
It's named a street, but size, it's an alley, but it is a dedicated street.
Gotcha.
Also because it has residents on it. It will never be back to an alley because technically, you really can't have addresses attached to an unnamed alley.
Thank you, Mike. Stay there.
Any other questions?
Just stay there.
Stay here, okay.
So can, any more discussion on this?
What are we...
Alley and/or street. So we would ask for a motion for legislation for our law director to write up to vacate how many feet? 355 feet?
Didn't we already vote for something the last time?
I think we voted for it to be...
Yeah, the last time we were here, we voted on something because I said no because everybody got mad at me thinking it was like a vendetta, but I was like, they literally didn't bring us anything. They said that they had something, and I can't vote on something that I don't know about.
Brandon, correct me if I'm wrong. Don't you need a vacation plat from the engineering surveying company to be submitted before the legislation can be written up?
Before it can be written up, or can it be written up and added later?
Or can it be...
I mean, it's not going to come out of this committee until it's complete.
Right.
What if we did a...
There's no harm in having it drafted up now.
What if we did a motion to, for legislation, once, to approve legislation to be drafted once we've received the... Please tell me what it was called. I just blanked.
The description of the vacation.
The description of the vacation. Could we do that motion?
Vicki?
I'm trying to remember.
I have a hard time.
Is there not a timetable in the clerk's office when we do certain things, such as an alley vacation? You need to do this, you need to do that.
It's not a one... She does have to tell me.
It's sort of the same process for the change of use for changing properties and zoning.
So I guess I'm wondering, what does that?
What checkmarks do we have to be writing?
Because I do believe for the vacation, for a street vacation, I do believe, once the vacation plat is submitted, I think it has to go in front of Planning Commission for vacation?
It's got to follow the chart.
Because I know they eventually have to approve the rededication of the relocated street, that portion of the plat. Because the vacation plat and the dedication plat can be the same sheet.
Yes.
So either way, Planning Commission will end up seeing it. But for, once it gets submitted, may have to have some input from Isaac from McKeever's on this, on what process it is once the vacation plat is submitted to us, what process it is. Because it's been a little bit since I've done a vacation for a street. That's not in a township or a county.
It does have to go to the Planning Commission before, we refer to the Planning Commission, they set up the meeting, and it comes back to us.
Right.
With their recommendations.
Right.
So is that what we...
So it does have to be pretty final by the time Planning Commission gets it.
Yeah, everything has to be done before the Planning Commission gets it.
But if we're waiting until we get a vacation dedication plat, I don't want to be, they're going to be waiting. See what I'm saying? They can't tear pavement out until the street's vacated, and technically, they can't start a street construction until the dedication plat gets approved.
Which comes from where again? The dedication plat comes from where?
The engineer that is doing the construction plans for the new street and the excavation of the existing pavement for the site plan.
So would it be appropriate if we did a motion for draft legislation pending, what was it called again? Plat?
Get the paperwork going, and then the finalization of the overall length of the project could be added.
So our motion would be more like, they make a motion to allow the law director to help get this paperwork started, because we don't even have the exact steps as to what we're supposed to be doing, step by step here, to start it, like...
Okay, well, I'll make a motion for, I'll make a motion, for this committee to authorize the law director to follow through the proper steps of the lot and drafting any legislation...
Vacating the right-of-way.
Vacating the right-of-way of the street, and drafting any appropriate legislation, and for all of that to come back to us for approval before moving to full council.
Or before we go to the Planning Commission.
Or before we go to the Planning Commission, excuse me. I'll amend that, before it goes to the Planning Commission. That was my motion.
Is the motion on the floor? Do we have a second?
Do you want me to say it again?
No.
I would like to clarify if I may.
Yes.
Please.
Previously, I mean, all of the documents as it pertained to the street vacation of Pleasant Hill were submitted in a couple of meetings, you know, previous. They have, I mean, Mike can speak to it, too. I feel like they've filled out all of the requirements for the vacation itself. I think we're just waiting on the vacation plat from them.
Yes.
So they've, I mean, they've even put down, I think, their $100 deposit that they're required to do as well.
So we've checked off the steps, okay?
Yeah.
And we have no idea when this dedication plat is going to be prepared and received by us?
I was told next month, and June's only a month and a half, or a week and a half away.
And we can't do anything legislation-wise until we have this dedication plat?
I can reach out to them to get a preliminary idea on what the distance is going to be that they're requesting to be vacated.
But preliminary is not going to be good enough, because we've got to have it.
Can we have it pending?
So should we start legislation?
I would recommend to start legislation.
But not vote on it until we can get all the information into it? That way, I guess, we okay to allow...
At least that you're discussing it.
So a motion to draft legislation for the vacation...
First motion dies, now we're starting all over again.
Starting all over again. So I'm making a motion for draft legislation to be made for the Pleasant Hill Valley, Pleasant Hill Drive Alley, combine the two words, vacation, pending the plat...
Submittal.
Submittal, and for it to return to us for approval before going to the Planning Commission. Is that appropriate?
Mr. Goldberg?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sounds good.
If I have a second.
I'll second that one. As draft legislation.
As draft, pending.
Pending draft legislation.
All right, Clarissa?
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Vicki?
One, well, discussion.
Discussion.
And I get this confused. This is not the time when we need to discuss whether it's going to be an emergency piece that's done after the Planning Commission? Okay, great, yes.
And I'm a yes. Next up, rezoning lots R3 to GB. Take it away.
That paperwork was submitted by a Vita, is that yesterday?
Right.
May 20?
Yeah, that paperwork was submitted by a Vita for the three lots to be changed from residential to general business for the redevelopment for the parking lot.
So to be clear, R3 is Urban Neighborhood Residential District, and they need it changed to GB, General Business District.
Which is what all the rest of the Aveda property is, general business.
And for that, we just have to do legislation, go to all the neighbors, have a public hearing?
Oh, yeah. We go through the flow chart.
So step one is...
Just like what we did for the church.
Legislation, bring it back here, then it goes to the Planning Commission, then it brings it back here.
So I'll make a motion for draft legislation for the rezoning of the Aveda lots from R3 to GB to be brought back to this committee for approval.
The three lots.
The three lots.
Thank you.
It says Aveda lot, I was reading it off the paper.
All right, I'll second that.
Yes.
Erin?
Yes.
Vicki?
Yes.
We have open projects. Anybody want to discuss anything?
I have one. And that has to do with a land swap. Lutz Drive and Perstetter Road.
Thanks, Mike.
And I just wanted to check with Mr. Goldberg to find out, at the May 8 Plating Committee meeting, you had indicated that you were still working on that project with Dylan, that it should be done sometime next week, and that Dylan has to get you some new documents. Now, I checked today, and no transfer's been done on the auditor's website, so I'm going to assume that it's not done.
Stuff keeps coming up that puts it on the back burner.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other open projects?
Yes, the Dewine Rule Housing Project, I would like to make a motion to remove that from the open projects because it, the Dewine Rule Housing Project, is that's on here, right? Or is that in Public Lands and Buildings?
I think it's not on here.
That's an Economic Development Committee?
Oh, my bad. I thought it was on plating as well, my bad. I saw Tiny Homes.
It's on a committee that you're on, no?
Oh, yeah, it's in the third version later. My bad. I saw Tiny Homes and conflated the two. My apologies. So no.
Okay, no more open projects, public participation.
Chris Moritz, 226 Plymouth Street. I believe if you look in the ordinances in Title 901, those do cover vacation, vacating the valleys in streetways. We have a section in there that covers that. I believe it's 901. I don't have it in front of me, I didn't put my computer up today, so we can look at that, and I think Miranda's got to be part of that when it does come to that.
But is that going to have changes to it?
That's what I'm, we might want to look that up and see what's in that, because I know Miranda's part of that, part of the paperwork and stuff on it. That's one of the ordinances that the administration did not want to change, so I didn't change any of that, or has to have changed. That ordinance and stuff has not been changed, nor has 902, the one, the streets and sidewalks, we already changed that one, so that's just one of the ones I know of.
So there's nothing for us to worry about on that in connection with...
No, it just gives us guidelines with the ordinances that are already in there.
Great, okay, thank you.
Any more public participation?
I'm trying to do this for my mom. My name is James Katie. There's a, she had a...
Address.
This 216 West Mary Street is my dad's legal address, but I sold it. Hers is 210. They put up a fence that blocked that house back there. That's also is an emergency route, so my mom wasn't falling in the backyard, endless and stuff could come around that building to get to her house. And they put up a fence going straight down there. I went to the zoning board about it, they said that the plat...
What'd they say?
The BZA ruled for the fence to stay. I can put it in your...
Yeah, I'll let him speak, he can. That's what I'm trying, that's what I'm trying to get there.
Thanks, Dan.
Back in 2021, I do believe, a fence was put up across a active city alley off of, I guess it's the West Mary Street extension, blocking a alley. I don't remember who owned the property at the time, Lutz's?
Love it.
I think Lutz Builders owned the lot at the time. A fence was put up to separate a business from a residence, and the BZA ruled for the fence to stay up, which technically, they cannot block a public alley.
So how did the BZA have authority to block an alley?
I don't know, that's why I'm asking. But they ruled in favor of the fence staying up, which they also, from what I've found, they never got building permits for sit fence.
So, I mean, we can't, in this committee, we can't, it's on our list, so we can't do anything about it, but...
The only way to counteract or repeal a Board of Zoning Appeals is to go through probate, or...
Probate?
Not probate, but common pleas. Is that correct, Mr. Goldberg?
Correct.
Okay. Which I don't agree with how it's handled, but I cannot change that ruling.
Mr. Goldberg?
What's up?
They can't go back to the BZA?
No. I mean, are we outside the window to appeal that?
I think you need about 30 days.
Yeah.
Well, my mom and the guy that owns the house...
And your mom was at the hearing? Your mom was at the BZA hearing?
I asked her, she said that, they said that's what it was.
It's a good question. How about we set up a meeting, and we can talk about it?
Okay.
When's the meeting? I won't be there.
Yeah, I've got trial tomorrow.
Just email me, I'll get it.
Let's do Tuesday.
What time?
Please, he works.
You're going to be there. I'm going to request you to be there.
Mr. Katie, would you like to be present?
Yeah.
What, when do you work? Do you work Tuesday?
No, I quit HRQ.
So you're, you are available Tuesday?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, what about 4:00?
4:00 PM.
4:00?
Got it.
4:00 on Tuesday?
Tuesday.
When's your shift over?
5:00.
Okay, 4:00.
Would you see the addresses, man?
The address, 216 West Mary Street, the fence was blocked, but it blocks the 216 Street.
Adam Frizzell, Frizzell Passage. I would like to suggest that you guys bypass the Board of Zoning Appeals, which has apparently already inappropriately made a ruling on something it shouldn't have, and I would encourage you to direct the city service director to make an inspection at 216 West Mary Street for a construction that was not authorized with proper permitting.
Any more public participation?
Got to open your eyes.
Going once, twice?
6:24.
Meeting adjourned to 6:26.
4:06.
Buildings Committee, May 22nd, 2025.
Call the Public Lands and Buildings Committee to order at 6:26 PM. Members present, Chris Moritz, Clarissa Schaeffler-Slater, and C.R. Sherikas Chair. First up, we have public participation. Public participation for public lands and buildings.
Bring the chair up here, Mike.
No. Mike Keever, zoning administrator, City Besires. There is a, well, I'm not sure if this is the correct form, but next door, there's going to be a business going in that is going to be using up some of our parking spaces in the city parking lot. So I'm requesting something to be sent to review and committee about putting signage up for city employee parking spaces or an area, and have some money set aside for the business, because technically, they're allowed to use the city lot, which we are, since it's a downtown business. Just on the north side of the city parking lot here is Downtown Business District, wherein the other one. So technically, as a city parking lot, city property, we're supposed to have so many parking spaces available for businesses. So I'm requesting that we send something to Service Department for some signs like we have over here, employee parking only, and then setting some aside for public use.
Can the administration do that?
Well, I have to bring it up because of what is being planned. They're going to be having a drive-up window and a menu board for this coffee shop that is going to creating some traffic issues with traffic backing up in the alley, which technically, any other restaurant or food that has a drive-up window like this, they're all on their own property. And here is majority on the north side of the, between the drugstore and the coffee shop is a public alley, which you have three cars going in, they're going to be onto the alley backing up to use this coffee shop.
They used to have that for the donut shop a long time ago.
Yeah, but just a pull-up window. They're going to have a menu board like Wendy's there, and a majority of it's going to be in an alley. They're going to be backing up in the alley, so...
So what do you, well, obviously, we can't do anything about it now because it's not in committee, but what were you...
I just wanted to make it aware of because of the parking lot's public lands.
Do they have to get any zoning approval to put a menu board up on an alley?
It's, the plans have been submitted, nothing's been sent to Richland County yet, and we also have to be in communication with the property owner, because it's different than the business owner, so...
Okay. All right. Thank you. Do we have any other public participation for public lands and buildings?
Yeah, it's like, Mr. Katie, I think you wanted to talk.
Sorry, he called me earlier and was just asking. I didn't want to get this.
My name's James Katie, and I guess it's the old endless building. I'm trying to acquire. Best way to put it is like, I went on my own trucking business, I got to get my LLCs here soon, and I want to buy my first semi truck, my own trailer. That's a perfect spot. I'm not parking my semi on residential property. It's already a business, so when I bring my trucking business in, it'll bring tax money to Besires, and of course, I have more trucks, but they're not all going to be there. I'll send them home with my drivers, and I like to try to rent that, rent to like own that, since it didn't sell. I heard that it went up for four times to sell, didn't sell, so I'm going to do like a rent-to-home, and turn it into a business, and then the housing where the fire department used to sleep at, I like to turn that into like a house where I live, so I'll be living on my property and managing my own trucking company.
Does the CIC allow rent-to-own?
No.
Any public way to do that?
CIC has leasing, though, doesn't it?
It does, but it would have to be within option to purchase. It can't just be rent-to-home.
Yeah, that's mainly what I'm trying to do, lease to purchase.
Okay, yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, same thing, rent-to-home, lease to purchase, it's all the same, I guess.
That's all in the wording and how we do it, yeah.
Yeah, we can do that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Katie.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else have questions for Mr. Katie?
Good luck to you.
All right, so next on the agenda, we have the approval of minutes. I would consider a motion for...
I'll make a motion for the May 8, 2025. I'll make a motion for the May 8th, 2025 Regular Public Lands and Buildings Committee meeting minutes.
I'll second that.
Clarissa?
Approval of...
Sorry, I have a motion by Ms. Slater, a second by Mr. Moritz. Roll call vote, Ms. Slater?
Yes.
Mr. Moritz?
Yes.
I'm a yes, so it's passes. All right, and then, the next two are sale of public lands and North End Fire Station. I kinda look at those as all sale of public lands. We have a list from, that Mr. Myers was kind enough to take off of the City Service Safety Director's list of lands that we can get rid of now. I know that we have tried several times to auction some land, and it didn't exactly pan out. The one sold, so I didn't know if we wanted to turn this list over to the CIC with contingencies for some of it, like I know some of it's very, very small pieces of land, like I think the one is like two foot, two foot square, okay? So maybe having the CIC look at the exact land, and if it's in the middle of somebody else's yard already, you know, offering it to them for the cost of transfer angle.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would agree.
Versus, because I can't see asking somebody for baseballs or selling a piece of land in the middle of somebody else's yard.
And just to clarify, the water tower lot old, is that the east?
It, it's over there on East Street, and yeah.
East, that's either East and one or the other. One of those two.
I meant the east side of town, the, is it actually...
No, it's literally south East Street and one.
Oh, cool.
Yeah, there's like four lots there, I believe, three, three lots. Yeah, they thought it was four and realized it was three, because they had a key one. So I didn't know if we should just go ahead and...
Refer all of these to CIC?
Refer this to CIC with, maybe the administration helping make ruling off of what we've done before with some of it, as, or, I mean, because some of it, I know that they were talking about wanting to put contingencies on for right-of-ways for...
Now, do we direct...
...somewhere or something, I think one, at least one of those lots of the water tower was still something like that.
So just for clarification on the, on the operation of the CIC, and this might be for the law director, we can refer these, would the administration work with the CIC to determine the stipulations?
Specific needs?
Or specific needs?
Yeah, like whether or not, if there's a contingency factor that we've got to have a right-of-way for something, the CIC needs to know it.
Sure. I can take it.
Does it have to transfer ownership to the CIC?
Oh, do it, okay.
So we would be authorizing...
Mr. Myers, do you know more about this, since I know you've sat on that board?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Brandon, but I think you would have to request legislation for the council to approve transferring ownership of whatever properties on your list that you want, the CIC then takes ownership of them, then they facilitate the sale, the leasing, whatever, of those pieces of property. Correct?
So, legislation pending, any further information from...
No, I think you could request it now, and then before the CIC does any of their thing to make any arrangements with anybody, they would gather the information from, you know, Jeff Dunn, or from Tommy, or Bruce, or whoever, to make sure that, you know, any deed restrictions that are in there, anything like that is just put in place.
So we can...
Request legislation, draft legislation, that way we can look at it before it goes to full council.
Okay, so, yeah, I'll make, I'll make a motion for draft legislation for this list, and just for the record, I'll list it, it's the corner of Lawn and High, 210 West Mansfield Street, West Marion Poplar, Lane and Plymouth, Wingerton Plymouth, 411 Wallace, 606 North Sinuski Avenue, the old water tower lot, and 501, what, East Mansfield Street, as well as the North End Fire Station.
And I believe there's one lot that just didn't have an address.
Right.
Oh, the 080050048000, that one as well, to have draft legislation for transfer to the CIC, for this to come back to committee before going to full council.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, so a motion of Ms. Slater?
I'm working on it.
I have a second with Mr. Moritz. Roll call vote, Ms. Slater?
Yes.
Mr. Moritz?
Yes.
And I myself am a yes, so that passes.
So, my only concern is how much dead-end control the city wants to control over the properties, once it gets to the CIC, the whole point of the CIC is to relinquish city control over the property, but I think we can make this work, it's something that I can look into, and if I find something that says there can be no influence, I'll let you out.
Well, I was gonna say, I know that there's deed restrictions that they've put on several of the other properties that the CIC has sold, so it's just figuring out what has to be done deed restriction-wise, or, yeah.
They have a gas station and a couple of others.
Yeah. All right, so, income tax levy for the swimming pool was brought to us by Tommy.
Do you think it should come up now, or do you just wanna wait until Friday?
About this? Yeah, that way we can get it all the way now, and you guys, because everybody's here to listen anyway, come here, Katie.
Kevin Myers, 421 O'Stoickwood. I met with Tommy last week before, he went on vacation, and he presented some of those to me, and which was referred Tuesday night. So his idea, and he did some math, that a point zero six five percent, I believe, was the number that was listed on there, would raise about $201,000 a year as an income tax, and that would be for any and every cost associated with the pool, so that would be, you know, the maintenance of the pool, the chemicals, water, repairs, paying your lifeguards, you know, every cost included. In exchange for that, there would be no more charging for people to attend the pool, it would become a free pool.
For residents?
So that was, that's the sticking point that he and I kinda discussed a little bit, and that was something that would need to be worked out. You know, anybody who's paying taxes on that, by all rights, should be there, but, you know, do you wanna charge somebody who lives in Marion that just wants to come up and swim for free? That's something you'd have to figure out. You know, I talked with Lisa today about it, she asked, well, how would we, you know, you could do something as simple as, you know, if you as a resident, as a taxpayer, are entitled to go there for free, you could come up to the administrative office and get a pass that you didn't have to pay for, that you showed to get it.
Yeah, and I do know that they have that ability through their, the system that's been donated to them, that they're able to do RFID and scans, so we would be able to issue card passes, and it would have all of their information on there.
Yeah, so the whole idea there, again, would be for an income tax, I know that was one question was asked, would it be income or property? I think that the percentage was point zero six five, and he shared the dollar amount that it would be for whatever your income was, I don't have that in front of me from Tuesday night, but I do know that the number he came up with would raise an estimate of $201,000 a year, which pretty much is pretty spot-on with what the pool budget is, with a little bit extra for any repairs that might be needed.
Well, we already have a leak, from my understanding.
Yeah, yeah, and it's hard to find somebody to fix it.
And when it comes to passes, I know Columbus Public Parks and Rec...
Thirty-two dollars for a, for a hundred, thirty-two dollars for a hundred thousand dollars' worth of income annually.
So I would just like to point out that I wasn't against it, because I didn't have the information, but I'm not gonna say if we should pass it or not, because this would, I wanna clarify that this would go to the voters...
Yes.
Right.
At election time, and they would get to determine if that's what they want, and if anything, I've been about is giving the voters options, so that has changed my perspective of it since Tuesday, because I was told that that, that it would include the free admission for residents, so.
All right, well, first of all, Columbus Public Parks and Rec do cards, and they only charge public a dollar, which was what it costs to...
Make the card.
Make the card, so you could go up at any time during the year and get your, your card, and that was nice, because that kept it from costing the Parks and Rec for the cards. I don't see us having that big of an amount coming out.
Now, I will say that something that I brought up last year, when all of this fundraising and stuff was going on, and when I knew about them having the ability for the passes, for the cards that we haven't utilized yet, and this would be administrative function, if this comes to fruition, I think it would be important that for children, like emergency contact information, all of that stuff could be provided, and that card would actually have that information on there. So for compliance and for liability issues, that would be something as well that could tie into this, and allow us to have the funding to do that, so.
That's what Columbus Public's cards, they, they had the emergency contact on there, plus you knew who was there, so they scan your card, and they know that you're at that facility at that point in time.
If there's an emergency or something, we're able to track who's there now.
So it's, it's a win-win if we did something like that, but, Mr. Moritz?
Also, I know that with all the generation, with everybody being generous last year and donating to keep that pool open, even the people who came there and paid to be in that pool, we were still in a negative almost $40,000 for the year of the pool, still the city taxpayers were paying almost $40,000 just to keep the pool up and running, even with all the nice donations and everything else we got.
And I'll say, I see that this is a point of contention for the public on two fronts. One, we're asking for an increase in income tax, which I felt was a slap in the face, but two, this pool obviously means a lot to the community from the donations and the late work that was done last year, so this would solely put it in their hands to come vote and decide, you know, if we want to designate money explicitly for the pool and its funding, so I think that's...
My only backing of the, or my only backings of this are, A, this gives the voters the right to say, "Yeah," or "No," and I personally think that they should have that right for a lot of things, and there's a lot of things that happen where they don't get a say, this tells them, and this takes the pool off of the chopping block every single time...
Yes.
Anything comes up. That's why I wanted, I backed the safety forces levy, because these are the things that the community wants or needs, and every single time anything happens, those are the first two things they have to handle on the bus. So, for, for right now, we just have to okay the Finance Committee to move forward if that's what we all agree on.
I would like to make that motion to forward this to Finance Committee for the consideration.
All right. We have a motion from Ms. Slater?
Second by me.
The second by Mr. Moritz. Roll call vote, Ms. Slater?
Yes.
Mr. Moritz?
Yes.
Myself, yes, so that passes, and now the Finance Committee has our complete agreement too. All right, so next, do we have anything on open projects that we need to talk about this evening?
I would like to make a motion to take, it's clearly not gonna be addressed in this capacity, so I'd like to make the motion to take the wavelength contracts off of the open projects.
Actually, I was informed that some of those are on a year-to-year right now.
They're on a month-to-month.
On a month-to-month. So, if we take it off, then it has to be completely referred, and I, I have had several people approach me about those recently, so I have a feeling something's gonna be asked about them soon, and I really didn't wanna send it back to council to bring it back here and make a double step.
I guess one of the scope that I was concerned on, that it would be the tower itself that could be, or what I think would still have to be referred?
Which was also that the tower contract...
Is the tower on there as well?
They, they were in there, I don't have one of them.
Okay.
But yeah, the tower contract's on there as well.
I bet they keep those.
Right, but if the, but if the tower goes out to bid, I don't, if we're running the tower to go out to bid, which would be the step that I would think would need to take, I think it still has to be referred?
Well, it's, it's in committee, so it's open, and then we can make the request.
Right.
So, the fact that it was left open was for that reason?
Is the lease of the tower itself on the open project list?
No, I think it's just the wavelength contract, that's why I was...
Who's the, the tower leasing? Yeah, leasing of Warren Street Water Tower property. So do we need to rephrase the way it was put in here?
Well, I believe, I don't wanna, right, I don't want to, I believe the intent was to review them and their scope and their legitimacy, and I don't think that's being, whereas I think if we're wanting to put those out to bid, I think it would have to be referred from full council. I mean, the law director can... Or anyone else.
Yes, so American Tower Leaks, that's the other group. So I would leave the one on, but I do think that maybe at the next council meeting, too, have the tower lease put on as well. And I got a phone call from somebody who was up at the park the other night, who said there's still lights on on the cameras, I have not seen this, I don't know how we could find out, but if there's still lights on, that means that they're still able to be active.
So I did go, I had similar correspondence made to me, so I did go out while I was out there, and took some pictures, just so we had reference of them. Some of the cameras are deactivated, like the ones behind shines are unplugged, the ones at pool themselves are unplugged, however, the one that's mounted by the splash pad is still connected, at least appears to be, and all of the supporting...
Equipment?
Equipment, so the receivers and the broadcasting equipment appears to still be intact, so that is a question to be asked, I guess, to the administration.
And whether or not anybody still can see any of the stuff on, at least that camera, but as or so, that means there was destruction done with a camera that may actually be able to be seen by somebody.
Yeah, so there's three cameras on a pole pointed at three different locations, it looks like, one being the splash pad, one being the playground park area, and one towards the maintenance building, the, where the, where the bathrooms are.
The shared building over there?
Um, that is still, looks intact to, it, you know, I am not the expert, so, I do know, in my current position, I work with some of that equipment, but not to a full capacity where I can make a determination, but I know Jeff Dunn was supposedly working on some, I mean, not supposedly, some of them are unhooked, but I have those, I can share them if anyone wants them, they're welcome to request them from me, I will share them.
I said, if you would like to share those with the administration upon my request?
Yeah, I can do that.
And Mr. Dunn, so that they can see what may or may not be active to...
I'll send them to Miranda.
And maybe even Brandon, in case he needs that information. All right, do we have anything else on open projects? Okay, do we have any public participation? Seeing none, I'm going to adjourn at 6:50 P.M.
Health and Safety Committee, May 22nd, 2025.
James, me, and myself, Vicki DeShawn, Chair. First on the agenda, public participation. Anyone wishing to speak to the committee, please come to the podium and state your name and residential address. Seeing no one. Next, we have approval of minutes from the March 20th, 2025 Regular Health and Safety Committee meeting, as well as the approval of minutes from the May 8th, 2025 Regular Health and Safety Committee meeting. Does anyone wish to make a motion, whether individually or collectively?
I'll make a motion to approve those collectively.
Motion by Myers. Second by Sherik. Any discussion?
Is there anything that you saw that may or may not be being corrected?
Don't ask her that.
I, I actually do want to know.
I looked over, didn't see a red pen, so...
No, I'm doing it in blue now, because, yes, there are changes, but...
Not massive changes, or massive changes? A massive change, I would like to have a change, if it's just little tiny thing, but not as worried. as worried?
We're fine with, no, they're not massive changes, but they're changes enough that I will be voting no. But that's me, so.
Are there edits you'd like to draw into this question that we might, may or may not want to alter our...
That's called reading the minutes.
I glance through them. I will tell you, I skimmed them, which is something I got to do today, which I haven't really been doing the last day. I just, I didn't know what your escape was a few minutes ago. Because skimming, I'm not, I go to best misspellings when I skim.
Oh, yes, no, I don't even look at misspellings or the dotting of an i or the crossing of a t, as I've been stated to do.
You do.
Yeah.
I do. When I actually remember anything, because I have a lot of time, I do.
There's just a couple places, well, okay, you're going to ask. We're going to look at March 20th. Under public participation, it refers to Mr. Scribner. It's Mr. Stride. I mean, I don't know.
That's a Scribner's error.
Yeah, no pun intended, huh?
Good. Can't make this up.
That's the only one, really, on that one. But on May the 8th, under public participation, under the paragraph where Mr. White is talking, if you look at the 1, 2, 3, third lineup, it states, "DeShawn stated that the ordinance came out of finance." That was really Myers that stated that, not me, or not myself. Also, on the second page, under Proposed Ordinance Number 24-2025, it makes reference to Keith stated that he assumes, it wasn't Keith, it was Myers.
I'd like to amend my motion to approve these with the edits that Mrs. DeShawn has just made. That's a letter.
And I would like to amend that second.
Okay. Roll call vote. Myers?
Yes.
Sherrick?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
DeShawn? I'm still doing my now. Motion passes. Next, we have Proposed Ordinance Number 24-2025. That's the traffic map. That has to do with amending the traffic control map and file, where we're going to provide henceforth that there shall be two driving lanes on South Sandusky Avenue from Marion Road to Beale Avenue, with north and southbound left turn lanes at Southern Avenue and a southbound left turn lane at Beale Avenue. Now, at our May 8th Health and Safety Committee meeting, first off, I had brought up observations on the wording in Section 2. I still feel we need to look at Section 2. And based on what Mr. Gober had mentioned, Section 2 is a standard paragraph. It always has the same verbiage. Its subverbiage was left out of Section 2, which, if you read it, made absolutely no sense. But as it was pointed out by Mr. Gober, the only thing that we're doing with this particular ordinance is we are altering the driving lanes aforementioned. So I'm just wondering if in Section 2, we would just state that the Public Service Safety Director of the City of Yousaris, Ohio shall only alter the driving lanes aforementioned, period, and will strike out the verbiage and direct only those authorized, as are necessary, to regulate or guide traffic in accordance with the provisions. Kevin?
Do you remember when I asked for the current traffic control map and suggested? My belief is, once we have those, you don't need any of what you just read. It can really just use that as a attachment, A. Reference this, these are the changes that we're doing.
Okay, I'll discuss, because I've got information on what you were talking about. So again, that's, you know, just my thought. At the last meeting, Mrs. Sherrick had, Ms. Sherrick had inquired if the state has approved the changes. I spoke with Mayor Truca on May 14th. He spoke with Dylan Wyatt, who said he would reach out to the state for their letter of approval. Mr. White is on vacation. I did check with Mr. Truca today and, you know, of course, he doesn't have anything. Now, oh, that was another matter. Yeah, does not have anything as of yet. Also, at the last meeting, Mr. Myers was wanting the traffic control map. I'm calling it attachment. Now, when I met with Jenny Gerger down in the police department, who handles the traffic control map, she supplied me with... Yes. She supplied me with a copy. Her chart has, you know, all the different streets. And it identifies, you know, like when a parking meter was removed and when it was removed and all that good stuff, the ordinance and the date, what have you. In going back through this for South Sandusky Avenue South, there is no reference to when that was made a three-lane street, Sandusky, you know, from. Her only thought is that she can only amend this map based on her being provided by the council clerk, a copy of the past, of the legislation that's been passed authorizing the changes. So she said, you know, that could have been, who knows how far, or way back, and it just, you know, wasn't provided to her. So, I mean, I don't know if that begs the question on, do we want to go through, or have the clerk go through legislation?
No, I don't think so. But I still would like to see a proposed entry to the traffic control map based off of this whole project.
Okay.
And I would like to see that proposed entry to the traffic control map included in the legislation as an attachment.
Okay. When I spoke with Jenny about that, she said that once, you know, when the legislation has been passed, what she will do, what she does do is she looks at the caption. And based on what that caption states is what she then places on this chart. So I guess she does that after the legislation's been passed and given to her. But you are saying to me that you're wanting us to show her, okay, here's the piece of legislation that we're looking at?
Well, if that's, with that explanation, so when I was on the Traffic Commission, I know we did a couple of these, and that's when Kelly was the administrative assistant, we had the sample given to us of what it was going to say. And whether or not that was or wasn't what the caption of that piece of legislation was, I don't know. But if you're saying that that's Jenny's MO for doing that, I'm fine with that explanation.
And I, I trust Jenny. Yeah. So, and this is something that, you know, I will just follow up on after everything's all done and after, you know, Miranda's passed on. And I will then get a copy of her updated chart. What did I call her?
So that's when she passes on.
Oh. When you passed the piece of legislation, and I was thinking, I knew what I meant to say but didn't say it. Ooh, I apologize.
So we just want to table this until Bruce gets the answer from Dylan from the state?
Right, I'm still not finished. Please. I did receive an email from a constituent, and she posed some questions. Number one, she asked if there was a traffic study done when the three lanes were originally put in. I did talk, excuse me, I did talk with Jeff Dunn, and it was just today. And he indicated that he was going to check with McKeever and Associates, knowing that Dylan wasn't in, but checking with another gentleman that works out there. And if you can just bear with me here for just a second, Jeff's comment was, and it was, "Dave could not, cannot find Dylan's traffic count for your meeting today, but we'll ask Dylan next week." Now, traffic count, oh, yeah, that would be, yeah, traffic. And, but they'll check with Dylan next week, which I said, no problem, because this isn't a rush. This isn't even going to be looked at until the 2026 street project.
Yeah, I think they wanted to have this part done by fall this year.
Oh, okay, now that...
I thought that's what I heard.
That would be, we still have time.
The constituent also questioned if a traffic study would be done now before any changes are made to this legislation. She did indicate that traffic backup, getting out of their driveways, and she's at the Southern Avenue area, I am going to assume, because she was talking about, I did apprise her that those turn lanes are not going to be removed. They're at Southern and then also on Beale. But she did ask those questions. Let's see. And also in talking today with Jeff Dunn, the reason for eliminating the three lanes, saving except for the north and southbound left turn at Southern Avenue and the southbound left turn lane at Beale Avenue, was to move both the vehicle and truck traffic back towards the center of the street. Because right now, with having three lanes, the traffic is driving over the catch basins and the main holes, which are close to the curb areas. And that's the reason for going back to the two-lane. Mr. Dunn also indicated, and I do remember this now, at the Traffic Commission meeting, of which I am a member, and I forgot, Mr. Dunn said he'd be happy to come to a committee meeting, talk about the project, answer any questions that we might have if the committee so wished him to come. I said I would check and let him know. And I guess that was it. So I guess my first question is, do you wish to have Mr. Dunn come and speak at a meeting?
So would it be good for Mr. Dunn to come in with the traffic study and come to the stake at the next meeting?
Great.
And if there isn't a traffic study, I don't see a need for him to have to be here. But if he wants to, I wouldn't be opposed to it either.
I know that Mr. Dunn indicated that the traffic is, has decreased on that street. But even though it's decreased from what it's been in the past, again...
You've got a big summer, when that's when it has the most traffic on that road.
And like I say, that'll be the count then that Dylan will be able to have available, you know, to provide to him. Okay, so then I will check with Mr. Dunn and get that set up for him to come and talk. I think...
I would ask one more question about that.
Sure.
Somebody approached me the other day and said, well, if they're going to get rid of the center lane, that makes the road wider. Would they be able to do a lane on one side specifically for bike traffic? I guess there's been bikes out that way. I don't know. But, I mean, I am, I usually miss that part of the road. Like I come off of Beale where I'm...
That'd be a question for Dylan, obviously.
I figure, while it's being asked about, that's something that would Mr. Dunn and then think about, would they want to do something just for safety? Because technically, bikes aren't supposed to be on the sidewalk sometimes. We do have an increase in bikes all over town, so...
Okey-dokey, I've written that question down.
So I did promise I would bring that up on the front of the house, so.
Okay.
I apologize.
And I will just state to the constituent that emailed to me that when I spoke with Mr. Dunn today, he did indicate that he would be more than happy to talk to the constituent one-on-one. And so I will be getting with that constituent through an email, and I'm trusting that she's listening to tonight's meeting as well. But I'll be responding, you know, to her with what we talked about tonight. Okay, that's it for me on open projects. Anybody else have any open projects?
That was the proposed ordinance, no, on open projects.
Excuse me?
That was on that proposed ordinance.
Oh, it was, I'm sorry, yes.
So, yeah, you open up open projects, I don't know how I get here.
Never do I.
Okay, public participation.
Greenway 1125 Hillcrest Drive. So a couple of things, Vicki, I'd like to, some people have talked to me about, and Tommy Sternner brought it up in several meetings in the past when this was talked about, that there are going to be no turn lane lights at East Southern and at East Beale, for people to turn either east, yeah, east or west onto either of those streets. Some people are concerned because at Southern, when you have Route 4 going across that short distance, a lot of people say, some people cut people off, because there is really no turn light there at Southern or at Beale. And I think Tommy Sternner, and I might could be wrong, but Tommy Sternner had said in some meetings that there was not going to be turn lights.
That's my understanding that he stated.
They're not changing the lights. I consider that a kind of safety hazard, especially at Southern, because you have that short stretch between Route 4 over to 98, okay, Sandusky, and the lights are not in sync with each other.
People do fly through there trying to...
Trying to make, trying to make the turn off of coming north on, down Sandusky to turn onto Southern, East Southern. And they fly down there. And then people are trying to make the mad dash from the South Sandusky coming on to, well, it'd be that short section of Southern.
A little tiny section we can, because it's...
And I've seen, many times I've sat at that intersection, and I stop prior to getting that intersection, because people like to whip around that corner really fast, and there's not much room there for that turn at all. So my thing is, I would like to see a safety study done.
And there are a lot of accidents there.
Yes.
I have seen so many accidents.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, and the problem with that is, that's not going to get any wider, you know, we're there, we're in, but that's going to stay probably the same.
That section of South Sandusky is not going to change at all. The only section that is going to change is south of the turn lane on Sandusky heading south past Beale. That's the only section.
From Wallace to Shellis.
Yeah, basically clear down there. That's the only section that's actually going to get wider. But everything else is going to stay, stay, same size. It's not going to, they're not enlarging nothing.
They're just changing the paint.
That's all they're going to do. So, I mean, to me, I think if we're going to look at safety, I think turn lanes need to be put in.
Turn lights.
Turn lights, yeah. Turn lights at those turn lanes, you know, for safety, so when stuff backs up, people can at least turn.
Or figuring out how to sync those lights so that we don't have that mad dash going on the hill.
Yeah. I believe it should be at least looked at, into, because people have said something to me about that, that it's chaos. Plus, you could also look, ask the police department, how many accidents have we had over the years at that intersection at Southern and Sandusky Street?
My sister got hit on a bike there when we were kids.
My sister's car got hit there about four years ago.
So, I mean, I don't think it's much of a problem down at Beale as much.
No.
No, because the only problem you have there is with the semis trying to turn.
And it's not, and it's not wide enough in the one section to turn without crossing the line. And I've watched the buses have a...
Yeah, and I think if they do something, they need to move the signal switch when you're coming from east to west on Beale, they need to move that back a little bit for the semis to make the turn.
The stop bar, the stop bar needs back further. Because I don't know if it's still a signal switch or if that's by a camera now.
It's not by a camera.
Those aren't cameras.
Those aren't cameras.
And those are all independent for each other.
Yeah, so you have backing them up.
Yeah, I think that that needs to be moved back a little bit further so that semis can actually make that corner a little bit easier.
Anybody who drives a very large vehicle understands how it is to try to get around some nice corners.
Right. And then I know sometimes when I've sat there, I've seen truck drivers just yell and scream at people. and scream at people, because they went beyond the line, and it was probably because light changed.
I, I've literally sat in the bus and gone, "I can't move, I really have to move."
Now, where the stop bar is should go to Traffic Commission, and they, they had the authority to move that.
But since Vicki's on Traffic, Traffic Commission, I might as well just talk about it now. So it's just, it's just some concerns that I do have, and I know some other people have too.
Okey doke, I've written this down.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
And you down line about the white stoplights, and you in the semis, you can be sitting there cussing out a car, because they don't want to back up, they're looking at you like...
Any other public participation? Seeing no one, I'll adjourn the Health and Safety Committee meeting at 7:15 PM.
Service Committee, May 22nd, 2025.
Service Committee, call to order at 7:16 PM. Members present, Sierra and Sherrick, Kevin Myers, I myself, Chris Moritz. Any public participation at this time?
Al Frazier, 720 Dudley Street. I'm addressing the Service Committee. Most of my comments tonight are going to be pertaining to services that we pay for. Okay, and last time I was up here, I mentioned that, uh, our service department doesn't pay a, a lot of attention to health and safety. We current, or recently had an employee hurt pretty bad. So I received this from the Service Director, I made public records requests, and this is one of the requests, it's a list of the previous city safety team members, and he tells me in his response that he hasn't had time to, uh, address any of these, any of this issue. So the Service Director's busy, I understand, so he's telling me that he needs time to work on that. My next, uh, question for service would be, uh, do we currently have a full-time, uh, city engineer?
Not employed by the city, but we've, we contract to McKeever's.
So it's a subcontract to McKeever and Associates. That's who engineers the street projects, correct? Our street was recently done, and you know, I've had issue with the, the way it was finished, okay? There's an old saying in real estate, okay? I know a lot of old sayings, because I'm old, but anyway, the old saying is, the first thing that people look at when they're looking or interested in property is curb appeal. Everybody's heard that, correct? Our engineer, and from my statements that I heard from the last time council meeting, it's too expensive to put curbs in, okay? Too much, too much money, but the, so we're letting engineering dictate how we spend taxpayers' money. We just passed a street levy again. All the resurfacing is done with street levy money, okay? They're telling us curbs are too expensive, okay? We've paved almost every alley in this town. I think everybody would realizes that, right? There's not very many alleys in this town that haven't been paved. They don't get curbs. You don't curb an alley, right? You curb streets. Okay, they're telling us we can't afford it. One of the statements I heard was, "Well, we want more miles done." I will counter that by saying, I would rather have less miles of city streets done properly as opposed to paving alleys.
Did you have a curb before the project?
No.
Okay.
No. So our curb appeal doesn't exist. We have no curb. What we have is about a 10 or 12-inch ditch that's laying full of muddy water right now because of the rain. That's what we have in front of our house for curb appeal, okay? I was told that we don't curb our bermed city streets. I've got some pictures of Tiffin Street, I won't waste your time showing you the pictures, but I have them. Tiffin Street, two weeks ago, was bermed from Perry Street Bridge all the way to the end of it. Who berms Tiffin Street?
All the way out to Irving?
Yes, Tiffin Street runs north and south, all the way out of town.
They, they bermed it all the way to Irving?
Yes, yes, been bermed. So anyway, that's where our city street stands, our engineering, okay? They're telling us, they're dictating us what our city streets are going to look like, okay? What my property is going to look like. Oh wow, our property tax increased this year. We have no curb appeal, okay? Engineering, we're paying for engineering. Services, okay? One of my big pet peeves right now, I'm sorry, but, and I'm not anti-kid, our splash pad, it was engineered, okay? I'll say this to you folks, we, we learn from our history that we don't learn much from our history. You folks allowed a private club to oversee the installation of that splash pad and are currently running our water, paid for by us, down the drain. Now, what I'd like to do, now I didn't say I was going to do, I, what I would like to do is boycott paying my water bill for the summer months, okay? One or the other, I'll either pay my water bill, or I'll donate to us throwing the water down the drain at the splash pad. Shouldn't have to pay both, but taxpayers are, because of our engineering, and you folks, you know, we have a ban shelter at all Miller Park, history, okay? I was on the park commission when that was put up. They came to the park commission and asked permission to put it up. We said, "Sure, come to the next meeting, and we'll work out all the details." They never attended no meeting, they just went out and put it up. Okay, how much does that ban shell get used? It doesn't, because of why? It's in the wrong place. Private clubs, they mean well, okay? But we're paying, taxpayers are paying big bucks for summer months to run a splash pad that you allowed an engineer, and I'm here to tell you, my memory's still pretty good, that engineer sat right back there a year ago, when it was questioned about all of this, and his answer to almost every question was, "I don't know." I remember distinctly, his answer to just about everything was, "I don't know, or I'll have to check into that." And it was about expense of permits and all of it, you know, a bunch of double talk. Do the project right. City Council, you're here to serve us. It's about service. Oversee the services, okay? Our engineering, I'd appreciate it if you take a good, hard, long look at how much money we're spending on engineering for our streets and our projects, okay? Now, I made a public record, records request for the contract for the access, the last contract for access television, franchise fee. And I, I guess the Service Director, he, he's busy, okay? So I requir, inquired three to four years ago about the same issue, the fact that franchise fee is paid every year, but we don't have no access, okay? I requested information then, okay? Here's some legislation that I received from a former city council clerk, okay, pertaining to legislation passed by council pertaining to access television franchise fee. Here's what the Service Director sent me. The legislation that council passed for the franchise fee in 1997, okay? No contract with no cable company executive signature on it, the legislation that our council passed to accept that money. In 1997, it was $20,000, okay? What Service Director wasn't aware of, is I had checked into this, like I said, three or four years ago, I've got the same legislation that he sent me, that I, I've had for three or four years. And here's, I got a little clue for him, I wish he was sitting back there, so I could point out to him that I have the last legislation that I received from 2011. How much effort did he put into finding me the contract that I requested? Okay, I've got the legislation from 10 years after what he sent me. So that's the effort that we get, okay, that I've got. So I've lived here all my life, and I'm done. I'm beat, I realize it, I'm finished. You folks, what, can you describe what that was to start this evening off? My God, folks, come on. Hey, it's been talked about at your ad hoc meetings about rules. You debated for meeting after meeting, rules and procedures, okay? And even heard our esteemed council president mention this term, city manager. If this isn't working for us, I would gladly sign the petition to get it back on the ballot to change to city manager. We'd at least have a shot of hiring a paid professional to manage our services, okay? Let's think about that, because this obviously isn't working, okay? City manager. I'm done. I won't be back to bother you folks anymore. I know that I'm beat. This is it, this is the effort that I get on, on this, so thank you for your time, you all have a good one.
Thank you. Any more public participation? Seeing none, uh, BCO Title IX is coming along nicely, but we don't have it right now yet.
We don't have it right now.
Not that nicely. Well, it is coming along nicely.
No, it's coming along nicely.
Yeah, I think all mine, all the stuff I wanted to do has been answered, I don't know how far you are with Kevin's, but we're, we're almost there. Really close, finally. But I think it's actually just, uh, pretty much just to get it done right to be put into the documents on demand, so it doesn't, we don't get the wrong version of it again.
Correct.
Okay. That's all we're waiting on for that, so. Anybody else have any discussions on Title IX? Okay, moving on to open projects, any open projects anybody wants to talk about? I have codified ordinance, I did talk to Mr. Dunn, saying that we could take the changes to codified ordinance 923-24 off of it, because we are redoing it anyway, so that one could come off our list. But anybody that have any objection to it?
But were we doing it?
It's part of the...
Oh, okay, yeah.
It's part of 900. That's all I have for open projects. Any more public participation? Mr. White?
Greg White, 1125 Hillcrest Drive. So the current version of 900 that was on documents on demand tonight is incorrect then? Yes or no?
No.
It's not?
It's the most updated copy.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions about this. So under chapter 913.10, basically it says, I got it right here, connection to a water supply other than regular public city water supply is prohibited, okay? So it says in there, "No person, firm, or corporation shall establish or permit to be established or maintain or permit to be maintained any connection whereby a private auxiliary or emergency water supply other than the regular public water supply of the city may enter the supply or distribution center." Okay, I understand that, but then above that, at 913.09, you have backflow preventer device. Okay, so if someone wants to put a backflow preventer on a business, the hospital wants it, because maybe the water lines go down or something like this, okay? Why can't people hook to an alternate water supply if there is an emergency? That's my question. The mains go down for some reason, or work is being done, and someone needs emergency water, according to this, it's not allowed, okay? Any business, I'm not just talking about the hospital, but any business that needs water to their facility to operate, it, these two...
On top of that, any home, think of your grandmother sitting there and...
Or some, someone that does dialysis at home, or anything like this. So I would like those two to be looked at, okay? Is there a question here?
Yeah, are you talking about the backflow prevention devices being taken out of our ordinance?
No, 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 I'm not talking about that. I'm saying...
That's the EPA's thing.
EPA requires back, backflow preventers on a lot of equipment, nursing homes, hospitals, all this other stuff, so that the water that they do bring in from an alternative source, or like on a home with a well or a cistern, okay, that it does not go back into the waters, contaminates the water supply system, okay? That's what they're made to do. Some are huge, okay, some are, and homes are smaller, and they require a yearly inspection by a qualified person under, under the state law. So what I'm saying is, if we're not allowing alternate water supplies in case of emergencies...
Greg, are you interpreting that to be like a cistern or a well?
I'm talking about, well, it doesn't say that.
No, I'm, I'm...
I'm saying, it says, it says, "Private auxiliary or emergency water supply." So if you want to consider a cistern and a, uh, auxiliary...
Is that kind of where you're going with it?
Well, I'm going with it that if you're allowed a backflow preventer...
Yeah.
Okay, then why can't you have an alternate source, but then not, uh, 13910 says you can't have it then?
Well, at the end of there, though, it does say, "Unless approved by the Service Director and the EPA."
Right.
So there is a clause that allows for it.
Right, but it also says then in, um, 913.09, on the backflow prevention device, it says, "In the judgment of the Service Safety Director." Though, I'm just saying, I think those two need to be kind of looked at. All right, going on, not to waste any more time on those two things, 913.12, is that being left in, or is that being taken out?
He said .12?
Yes, sir. 913.12.
No, th- this is not the, the version of it.
Okay.
And what is what?
It's the right to enter.
It's the right to enter thing. I personally have rewritten that.
Okay.
Um, our law director has it, and he likes the way I have it written up, so...
Okay, I, I'll wait for that version then, because I saw it's still in here, and I was wondering, and you told me a month ago that it was rewritten, but it's never been added or put in yellow and red and all this other crap.
I actually personally rewrote that one myself, and Brandon just checked it and rewrote it for me.
That's fine. So then also...
It does like to, yeah.
That's fine, I can wait for that version, that's no big deal. So under 931.02...
I also wrote that one, too.
So under collection provisions, under E, the city will not assume any responsibility for damages to containers. So if the city employees throw the containers up in the air, which has been known to happen...
Where are you at in there on 02, Greg?
Uh, no, I'm not in, I'm in 931...
931, 02.
That's where I'm, we're at in that...
02, section E.
E, okay, thank you, Greg.
And I said it right, I know I did.
That has been rewritten also.
I was still looking for the page.
Oh, okay, that's okay.
I think the ADHD, but I picked up those little things.
That's okay. So my...
I also rewrote that one.
Okay.
That section is still in there, and I have talked to, uh, our administration that runs those, that runs that, I talked to Jeff Dunn, and also talked to people who are employed there. It does say that in there, but the city has, on the past, replaced damaged containers, even though it says they don't.
So I'm saying...
I know.
Can I explain the difference?
Yeah.
Typically, language like that indicates negligence disclaimer, you can't disclaim intentional or reckless behavior, so if throwing the, the thing isn't negligence, if they throw it and they break it, that wouldn't be covered under that ordinance. However, there's still some governmental immunity thing, but I think that we can... However, there's still some governmental immunity thing, but I think that we can all agree that that would be overcome and that it would be in everybody's best interest that we just replace trash cans if we break them. And it's not an accident.
Right, that's no different than the plow trucks taking out the mailboxes.
So, basically, we can take that last sentence out of there. Or leave it in there. Or reword that last sentence.
Yeah, because.
Reword it to say negligent.
I, I agree, I agree. If it's on, because some people leave their trash cans out and they blow in the wind and they break, or they hit something else. I understand that.
And that's going to be the hard part, which way was it?
That's right.
Unless it's on your Ring camera.
Unless it's on your Ring camera or your house camera.
The hardest part of any personal property is what did it look like beforehand?
Okay, so let's go on to section F in nine thirty-one, O two. It says in there about weight limits. Okay? I understand that the bags aren't, they're supposed to weigh sixty pounds. And, but I think these fees right here, depending on how much you, how many, how, what's the weight of these bags and stuff? And what do we pay at the, uh, dump fee at the landfill?
Probably more than that.
Yes, that's what I'm concerned.
My concern, though, is in that one that they're not carrying a scale with them, so it's, it's, it's a guess.
It's a, it's an estimated guess.
Yeah, I feel like this might be too heavy, so we're going to charge you what we think is, I mean.
It's an educated guess.
You know, we went through the same thing on the noise ordinance where we said, well, we didn't have proper tools to, to fix. I mean, if we're going to be.
Well, I'm charging by the weight, we should put a, a scale on it. I think, how much, how much weight, you know, what, thirty-five pounds maybe per bag? But what do we pay for dumping fees if we're taking additional bags on and we're only getting a dollar or one, two, or two dollars per bag? That's all I'm saying, that, to me, that needs to be looked at.
I was saying, my, my ex broke up a sidewalk and filled the dumpster out back.
Or they throw their grass in there? Their wet grass?
Wet grass is bad, but, but concrete, he filled and, and broke one of the trash trucks in Columbus because they lift those dumpsters and that was definitely overweight, so.
So, what do we do? Do we determine what our actual cost per pound is and try to figure out a fair number?
I, I do, I mean, you know.
I think that's kind of where.
I mean, if we're, if it were, it's costing us money.
But I also want to charge you for what you actually have, not somebody's guess on, well, that feels like it could be forty pounds.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is on the additional bags. What, what's our cost ratio for tonnies that we're paying? Are we losing money or are we making money?
Well, I'm sure we probably are losing money and that just keeps going up.
Right.
Also, I also believe that, uh, I don't remember which section it's in, but the service safety director has, when this is passed, I believe that he's going to be able to, uh, say, change it to six bags, four bags, whatever, we're going to change that stuff. I think I said it, but I can't remember which second, section it's in and under that part.
It's under nine thirty-one.
Yeah.
It's all under nine thirty-one.
Is it?
Yes.
Obviously, it's going to be under nine thirty-one, but I don't remember which one it's under in here.
Right.
And, and to me, in my personal opinion, I mean, we could get into the weeds and say, this guy don't like me, that's why he's charging me more for a heavier bag. Or anything like that. These guys do it for a living, I'm pretty sure they can have a reasonable guess.
Oh, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not questioning their judgment at all. I'm just.
When do you get into the extra?
When do you get into the extra?
You get.
That's the only thing I'm questioning. Are these fees enough to cover the city's cost for dumping at the landfill with the, with the increased cost?
Again, uh, service director can also, so, raise the cost of the extra bags too.
Right, but then I'm just, I'm bringing that to the table because.
That's in here somewhere, I don't know where it's at though, I do.
So, um, the other thing is, is nine thirty-one point oh six, storing of materials outside.
Didn't we, didn't we discuss this last time?
Yeah, we did, and it's still in there.
Well, it's.
Have, have we changed anything in that yet?
That section, I don't, I didn't change anything in it, I don't know if Kevin had that on his.
We talked about it.
Right, we talked about it as far as I went.
Because are we getting into the property maintenance code or the international, you know, property maintenance code? Or are we getting into that? I mean, I understand, I don't think the, the garage should be doing investigation work or issuing citations or anything like this, because basically, it should be the law director's office and the property maintenance inspector to be doing all that, because they're the ones that are going to be documenting this stuff for the court.
Agreed.
Or any citations or whatever. So, I mean, I have no problem if they're storing stuff there, you know, for the construction project, but the other stuff, I, I question that should not go through the property maintenance code that we're writing.
It could go in both, Kevin.
Well, you don't want it in two different places, though, because then they could contradict each other.
Well, the, the reason I think it though is that, when I asked the question, it was to, if it's in both, then they could actually go after one or the other to.
Well, because it also.
To clarify situations going on.
Because also in O six talks about rubbish, scrap metal and all that other stuff. And that's already listed in the property maintenance code. So, but the storing of building, building materials for construction, I have no problem with that, you know, for the four month cycle, I think that's pretty reasonable. But the other stuff, I think that needs to be looked at. And, uh, so when you get to nine thirty-six point oh eight, go to the left.
So, would it, wait, real quick, I'm sorry, would it be better to have in here in those spots, refer to the property maintenance code and the section there? That way it's listed and you know that we have it listed somewhere, that way people aren't looking and not finding it, thinking.
I think that's what we did mention last time, is refer back to.
Refer back, yeah.
What's nine thirty-six, I don't have that one with me, Greg.
Uh, nine thirty-six oh eight, that was on, um, has something to do, I, I had, I didn't write it all down, I didn't print it all out, because.
Thirty-six.
Thirty, uh.
Thirty-one, nine thirty-one oh six.
Nine thirty-one point oh eight.
Oh.
I'm sorry.
Six, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Yep.
And then it says nay. N Y.
I'm pretty sure that got taken out.
Okay, I just wanted, I was reading that today.
Everything, anywhere where it said.
I, I sit there and go, what is nay? You know, and I'm not picking on anybody's spelling or anything, but I just got, thought that was kind of humorous.
I'm pretty sure that got taken out.
Well, I understand, okay. Thank you, and hopefully, you know, we get the final version, we can all sit down together and, and kind of go over it a little bit. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Again, I want to reiterate that everybody in all six departments had a chance to look at this, go through it and all the heads, this is the version they wanted, this is the wording they wanted. Oh, where am I at, hang on. Lost my paper. Any more public participation, thank you. Seeing none, adjourned at seven forty-two, thank you.
Economic Development Committee, May twenty-second, twenty twenty-five.
I call the Economic Development Committee meeting to order at seven forty-four P M. Members present are Christopher Maritz, Clarissa Slater, and myself, Vicky DeShawn, and I guess I'm co-chair, but I'm, I'm still co-chair, okay? Uh, first off, public participation. Anyone wishing to speak to the committee, please come forward to the podium, state your name and residential address. And seeing no one. Next, we have approval of minutes from the May eighth, twenty twenty-five Regular Economic Development Committee meeting. And before we do that, Mr. Gober, I'd like to ask you a question. And I should know the answer to this, but I don't. If you have three, or no.
Yes.
Yes, if we have three members that are present at the meeting, one member's absent and then we have three present, and two vote yes and one vote no, one votes no, does that mean the motion failed or passed?
It'll pass.
Okay, okay, great. Um. I guess I'll do that under, uh, discussion. Do I have a motion, um, for approval, um, of the May eighth, twenty twenty-five Regular Finance Committee meeting minutes?
I make a motion to.
I'll second.
Motion by Maritz, second by Slater, discussion. I do have on this one, one change that I'd like to make, and that's under approval of minutes where it's bolded and states, motion failed. The April three, twenty twenty-five Regular Economic Development Committee meeting minutes were not approved. That can be stricken. And that's the only change that I have to that particular.
But I was, I was sort of confused with that as well, so I appreciate you asking.
Okay.
It was, um, so we had four voting members at the time that were all on council and one absent and.
I can never figure that out, so.
Yeah.
I have no problem with admitting that and asking.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Um. So, would you like, we need to amend?
Amend, yes.
Amend it with the, that portion stricken from the.
Correct.
Minutes.
I make a motion to prove it with the amendment change.
And I'll second that, all right?
Motion to amend the minutes. And second by Slater, or motion by, motion to amend by Maritz, second to the motion, Slater. All those in favor, roll call, I guess. Okay, Vicky. Christopher Maritz.
Yes.
Clarissa Slater.
Yes.
And Vicky DeShawn, yes.
Open projects.
I don't have anything.
Um, the only note I have is that, um, the partnership did release that they are, um, accepting applications or working on the, um, brownfield grants, which I'm not sure if that's in open projects or not, but I just wanted to make the committee aware of that opportunity. So, I don't know if we need to coordinate with the administration or if that's something we need to handle ourselves to apply for it or get with the partnership, but I'd be willing to make that connection if necessary.
So, is that a question you're asking us?
I'm not sure if it's on open projects. If grants in general are on open projects or if I need to refer at the next committee meeting, but either way, I can.
Take a quick look here.
Have that discussion with.
Doesn't look like it.
Okay.
When you want to talk about that.
Yes, and then, so I'll make that referral at the next meeting.
Okay.
And I'll try to facilitate a conversation with that. And then the other one is the Dewine's Rural Development Program that was stricken down by, I believe, the House voted against it, so that no longer exists, so I feel we can remove that from.
Okay.
Did you get that, Chris?
Yeah.
Do we need to make a motion to add or?
I don't think we, yeah, we just.
That's all I have.
Okay. Do you have anything, Chris, did you say?
No, I don't.
You had nothing? Uh, the JED and CEDA programs. I had an email today from Mr. Timberlake, who's our interim executive director for Crawford Partnership. He did reach out to the Columbus attorney, um, today requesting that he send to Mr. Timberlake some dates and times when he can come meet with elected and or appointed township and city officials to provide us with information and answer questions concerning the JED and CEDA programs. He apologized for dragging his feet, he said. Um, his thought on dragging his feet was that possibly we may want to think about waiting for the appointment of the new executive director. And once that's done, then scheduling this gathering or what have you. He did indicate that the partnership anticipates a mid-August appointment, but that they should know by mid-July, um, on the appointment of the, the permanent director, executive director. And he felt that if they know by mid-July that possibly that individual would be willing to come to Bussar's just to participate in that meeting, even though they would, I guess, officially be on the payroll or what have you until mid-August. So, I guess the question that I have is, what's the committee's thoughts? Do you want to go ahead and get a meeting scheduled now or do you just want to wait until after the appointment of the new executive director with the partnership so that individual can be present when we have this attorney come?
Yeah, yes.
I don't feel like it's something that's going to be like settled within this council.
Right.
It's probably going to be the next council's, uh.
Because I mean, JED was referred to us back on February sixth, twenty-four, and then CEDA was referred on September seventeenth, twenty-four.
It's been out there for a while.
Right, yeah.
At this point, I think it would be more conducive to have the, the permanent director.
How do you feel about that, Chris?
Yeah.
Um, Mr. Gober, do we need to have a motion and a second on that or just merely stating that?
We're tabling it?
Always better to do a motion and a second.
Okay.
So, I'll make a motion to table JED and CEDA until the appointment of the new director?
I'll second that.
Motion by Slater, second by Maritz. Um, I'm assuming no more discussion. Roll call. Slater?
Yes.
Maritz?
Yes.
DeShawn, yes. And then, one question, um, or I guess two questions to you, Mr. Gober. At the last meeting, when we were talking about this, I had questioned if we would be considering this a workshop or what? I know, uh, Mrs. Slater had stated that when she spoke with Mr. Timberlake, it was going to be more of a presentation by this attorney. You said you would do some checking to see what this would qualify as, this get-together, if you will. And then, secondly, depending on what we were going to call this, I'm going to say get-together, how many members from council could be present at this without violating the sunshine laws? And you just indicated that, um, you would check into that and I didn't know if you had an opportunity yet.
Since it's more of just a presentation.
Mm-hmm.
If there's going to be more than a quorum of either committee or council, it has to be a special committee meeting or a special council meeting or at a regular meeting.
It has to be a special.
So, my question is then, like, the O M L, like, when people go and they're already elected and they're already serving on council, like, how is that training seminar presentation, how is that copacetic, but like another training seminar isn't?
I don't think this would count as a training seminar, I think it would count as information. Right?
Well, yeah, if it's info, but I guess my whole thought is if it's information, I'm not making this, I don't, I guess I don't understand, because like.
And, and I guess who would be calling this? They're the ones that are setting it up.
Well, see, here's the thing, or I don't trust this council not to talk about city business.
Okay.
So, my recommendation would be to have it at a special committee meeting.
Great, but this is supposed to be not just us, it's supposed to be.
And township representative.
Townships and other cities and.
I was going to say, if you guys think that, uh, you can not violate the sunshine laws, then you can just go in your private capacities and don't make decisions and don't discuss city business.
I'm just saying, otherwise, would it not be numerous meetings being conducted at the same time? Like Crestline comes, Galleon comes, the townships come, when they all.
Correct, I gave you my reasons why I think it might be a bad idea not to have it comply with the sunshine laws to the letter. But, just, you know, keep in mind the sunshine laws while you're doing it and try not to violate anything.
Maybe we can host it here. Maybe we can make that proposition to host.
Well, and, and I really don't feel that Mr. Timber, well, I guess it would be the new, um, executive director, but I don't believe Mr. Timberlake had any problem if we did have it here. But, and I hate to keep being repetitive or redundant or whatever the proper word is, but.
Right.
Okay.
Need a bigger boat.
Got to get a bigger boat. Uh, we'll just table it, because this future.
Okay, well, yeah, let me ask you this, since we're going to be stating, hey, we don't want to do this until after the new individual's been, uh, appointed, and that means we're probably looking sometime in July, August, you want to think about this a little more and then?
Sure.
Get back with us?
Yeah.
And then let us know your thoughts. Okay, um, any other open projects that we want to talk about?
I do not have.
Okay.
Clarissa?
Nope.
Then we will end the Economic Development Committee meeting at 7:57 PM.
May 22nd, 2025. Call a finance committee to order at 7:58 PM. Members President James Me, Christopher Moritz, Vicky DeShawn, and myself as chair. Any public participation for finance? Seeing none, you have before you the minutes from the May 8th, 2025 Regular Finance Committee meeting, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Me, second by Mr. Moritz. Any discussion?
Yes. I only have one change, and that's on the first page, it's the last paragraph, the second line up, where it starts out stating White stated that the manpower ordinance, that was Myers that stated that, and that's the only change that I have to that.
I'd like to amend my motion for the change.
I've amended my second motion.
I have a motion to amend, to accept the minutes as amended by Mr. Me, with a second by Mr. Moritz. Now, any further discussion? Mr. Me?
Yes.
Mr. Moritz?
Yes.
Mrs. DeShawn?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, motion carries. All right, next, we have the appointments to the Income Tax Board of Appeals, and we have Lisa Whitehead and Mr. Frisell that have both expressed their interest. So I would like to entertain a motion requesting emergency legislation that places Mr. Frisell and Mrs. Whitehead on that board because they have pending, uh, things that need to happen. Are you trying to get my attention?
Yes, I am.
Should have elbowed me.
Um, can we talk first before we do that?
We can.
Because we may be amending, I don't know. I know that we had received an email back on April the 3rd from, um, our council clerk stating that Mr. Thidoff had contacted her stating his interest in serving on this board. And that was an email that went to you, Kevin, to myself, James, Me, and Chris Moritz. And in the email, it stated, however, given the upcoming election, it may be better to consider the following. Bussars Codified Ordinance, Section 189.18 states that the local board of tax review shall consist of three members. The three members of the local board of tax review must be domiciled in the municipality. Two members shall be appointed by the legislative authority of the municipality and may not be employees, elected officials, or contractors with the municipality at any time during their term or in the five years immediately preceding the date of appointment. One member shall be appointed by the top administrative official of the municipality. This member may be an employee of the municipality but may not be the director of finance or equivalent officer, or the tax administrator, or other similar official, or an employee directly involved in municipal tax matters, or any direct subordinate thereof. Because of what I just read, um, our clerk was questioning or stating it may be best to continue to look for other candidates or to shorten the term to expire on December 31st, 2025, if applicable. And that would be if we would be looking at Mr. Thidoff. So I guess my question would be, oh, and then one other point, um, Mrs. Whitehead had sent us an email back on March the 11th, letting us know, just to notify council that she is the mother of Cody Scott, who is running for council next term, Ward 4. So I guess my question to the law director, is there any problem with Mrs. Whitehead being on this particular appeals board with her son? And I think it's safe to assume, I mean, he's running unopposed, I guess unless something... I mean, that'll... Is that something you need to think about?
Yeah, it's something.
Or check into?
Yeah.
The issue we have right now is there is cases waiting to be heard, so we've got to place two members, so.
Mother, daughter, right?
Mother, son.
Mother, son, right? Yeah, so. Direct blood relation. Yeah, I don't know, let me think about it.
Okay.
Can I interrupt?
Sure.
So if we were to place her on, and it's a five-year term, and you do see a conflict, she would just then really need to resign on December 31st?
Correct.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm comfortable moving forward if we do that, but now you say we've got three names.
Right.
In the hat, and then with Mr. Thidoff, again, if we put him on now, he would have to resign on December 31st as well.
If Cody's the one not doing the, uh, Clarissa Slater, 3645, I see a report, if Cody's not the one doing the appointment, is it really a conflict?
That's what I have to look into.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you have a comment, Craig? So I think, my opinion is Mr. Frisell, and then choose one of these other two with one that might have to resign and one that definitely would have to resign at the end of this year.
Do you want to go with might before you would?
That's your decision to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion for Mr. Frisell and Mrs. Whitehead.
Requesting emergency legislation.
Requesting emergency legislation.
Appointing Mr. Frisell and Mrs. Whitehead to the Income Tax Board of Appeals.
I second that.
Any further discussion?
No.
Well, and absolutely nothing against either one of you gentlemen. I'm just sitting here thinking, we, you know, Mr. Thidoff had put his name in the hat prior to, um, you know, Mr. Frisell.
So.
Pardon?
My, my response to that, I think, would be, I don't think it was a matter of, uh, it wasn't a first-come, first-served basis.
Okay.
You've got, you've got three people that have submitted their interest. I think it is our duty to select who would be the three best candidates for this position. And I'm going to go on the record and say that I think Mr. Frisell, well, there's three that have expressed interest, we only need to put two on.
Gotcha, sorry.
Um, Mr. Frisell is not one of these two conflicts, or potential conflicts that could be coming up. It's a five-year term that gives some continuity to the board, so I'm absolutely in favor of placing him on there. And then, um, like Jim said, I think he's going with the, the may have to resign versus they would have to resign. I agree, I think that makes sense.
That's why I agree, that's why I mixed messages, only flatter is it.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All right, then we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Me?
Yes.
Mr. Moritz?
Yes.
Mrs. DeShawn?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes at motion carries. All right. Next up is, was that deep breath, wanting to say something?
Uh, are you requesting legislation?
That's what Jim just did, yeah.
Okay, and did you do it as an emergency?
He did, yes.
Okay, boy, I'll tell ya. And as much as I don't want to publicly announce, but I will, I even have new hearing aids, and I'm not hearing. Woo! Okay.
Just for you.
I'm sorry. Okey-dokey.
All right. So next, we have the income tax levy for the swimming pool that Mr. Starner brought up, which I explained some during the public lines and buildings. I do have a couple of things or feelings, I guess, that I want to express. You know, we hear people say, well, we're being taxed to death and, and we're being asked for more, being asked for more. And that's the thing, though, Aaron made the comment, putting it in front of the voters gives them the chance, so to me, that's a good thing. Now, one of the things that I dislike, I dislike the fact that we even have to or had to go out and ask businesses and individuals for donations in the past. I'm glad that those people stepped up, it was great. But I hate that we have to do that. This would be a way to make sure that never happened again. And to Aaron's other point, I'm sick and tired of any time we get into any type of budgetary concerns, these couple of things, and, and the pool being one of them, is dangled like a carolic, well, are we or are we not? This would alleviate that. And Mr. White brought this up when he talked about different types of levies for different things, and that's, you know, you can say what you want about we're being taxed too much, or taxed to death, or whatever, but the voters made a decision and, and they decided that it was worth parting ways with some of their money to have nice streets. Now we have the opportunity to ask them that same question, is it worth parting ways with, uh, as he said, $32 per $100,000 of income to keep the pool open and to keep it free for the taxpayers? That's the equivalent of going door-to-door, asking people to fork over money, but you're not getting that constant ask, it's going to be something, if it were to, to happen and, and to be passed by the voters, that it's taken care of, and that's one less worry, I think, that we have. So that's my, my two cents on the whole, whole thing.
I agree, it's one less threat.
Don't sell me on. I'm entered.
So.
And I just give $100 for a day of the pool.
Yeah.
Just like another councilman did.
If, so, if we do this, we would have to make a decision by August. It has to, the legislation would have to be passed by August requesting to be on the November ballot.
For transparency purposes, do we know what it costs for us to put something on the ballot?
When it's a general election, I don't believe there's any cost us other than preparing the legislation, because the election's already occurring and there's already, everybody in that jurisdiction already has to vote.
Okay, great.
So one of the things that we, if we decide we want to do this, that we would have to decide it'd be a length. I am opposed to ridiculously long-term, because I feel that we need to earn what we're asking for, but I don't want it to be so short that we have to continue to go back, and it's, it's nice for budgetary purposes, so I would be in that camp of a four-to-five year, uh, not a, not anything over that, would be my opinion.
Let me, let me ask you a hypothetical question. So with the .065, we're getting a little bit more money than, and that's for maintenance on the pool, okay? I just wonder how long we'd have to have it to get the pool leaks fixed? I just wonder if...
Well, so this isn't, Tommy's math wasn't to, to do major repairs, this was ongoing maintenance as needed, chemicals, paying the staff, all the costs associated with it. So to your point, I think, you know, if we collected $201,000 a year and, and maybe we spent 190 of those, you know, then that extra $20,000 then builds up for when we do have any type, major, major type of repairs that are needed. And if we have more repairs than what this is bringing in, that's where the general fund would have to kick in, same as it is now.
Due with increased costs, then five years may not do it fully, so we wouldn't have to touch the general fund.
I would say that I think the cost of running the pool, I believe, the year, I believe it's about $108,000 to $130,000, varying on the cost of chemicals, so, and personal services, we did just bump their money from like $11 to $13 last year in order to find lifeguards, because nobody was applying. So staffing will play a factor in that, and discussing if we're opening up, giving everybody free passes, we might have to have more staffing, so all that would be in flux, but I think the $201,000 would be a decent number to keep the pool running and do repairs.
So we're talking about length of time?
Yes, but I mean, I don't think you would, sorry, I was saying that more to talk about having to go into the general fund. I think that's enough money that we would not have to go into the general fund through the course of, uh, four-to-five-year levy.
So what we're looking for on time, Jim, is when do we go back for renewal?
I would say four would be good. If I had a question.
You want to, what was that?
I think four, four years.
Four years, all right. It's a number. I'm good with that.
So do you want to request legislation at this point, or do you want to still think about it, or if we do it now, we can do it non-emergently, have three readings, let the public gather input, and give him time to prepare everything?
Exactly.
Okay.
And how soon does this have to be?
Has to be done and passed, um, 30 days prior to the deadline, which I believe is August 3rd.
Well.
By the time the 30th is up, it would be August 22nd, I believe.
Oh, so it would have to be an emergency, wow.
That's what I was sitting here thinking.
I was just looking at a calendar just to make sure.
That's a bummer.
We could do a first reading and then emergency after that.
You could do all three readings in a minute at that point, if you want.
I would like to do that, um, but again, this is one of those things that I'm, I'm happy to, we're not making the decision, all we're doing is making the decision to put it in front of people to have their say, so, um... Yeah. I would.
Entertain a motion.
I would entertain a motion requesting legislation.
For four years.
For a four-year income tax levy at a rate of .065%. And it needs to be worded to cover all expenses associated with the pool. And just for the public's information, if this does pass, that money goes into a specific fund, it cannot be moved or used for anything other than that, so I know that's a fear sometimes of, of the public. So entertaining a motion for .065% for, uh, for a levy to be placed on, income tax levy to be placed on the ballot for a period of four years, commencing January 1st, 2026, for a period of four years.
And did we say it needs to be an emergency or not?
No, I think at the third reading, we could request it to be passed as an emergency to meet the deadline, but that way you still get your three readings.
Okay.
Can I add something? I don't, I don't know, just throwing this out there. I know we're talking about the recirculation under the splash pad, and there was some discussion during budgeting over what do we consider the splash pad? Do we consider that pool fund, or do we consider that park fund, and where would that fall? So my only... I was just thinking, could we say it as aquatic recreational or something like that? Because then we could use that money possibly, if we get that and there's, the repairs of pool are done, maybe we could use that to help fund the recirculation to save us, but I don't know, I was just throwing that out there.
The splash pad isn't ours.
And that's, that's probably, that's...
I believe it, I believe we own it, they, they paid for it.
Yes, I believe it's the city's.
Yeah.
And like, we, the city itself was the one who funded all the pipes and stuff beneath it, it was just when we went out to bid to put the actual, um, the butterflies and stuff up, that was so high for the city to do it, because you had to have like, um, payroll certifications and stuff like that, it drastically increased the price. And the administration at the time, they, they were advised, I believe, by McKeever and Associates, that if they were able to get one of the local clubs in town, that they could get it at a much reduced price, because they don't have to meet all the governmental standards we had to meet.
And I'm pretty sure we entered into a maintenance agreement, but I don't know who's responsible for.
I'm not so...
But I, it's my understanding that we own it, we insure it.
We do, yeah.
So it is ours.
But wasn't there something, they were trying to boost some money for some recirculation pump or something?
Initially, the, the two different designs, one was a recirculation, the other, the one is what we ended up going with, which all the water goes down the drain.
So I did talk to someone at the Kiwanis, they are in charge of maintenance, that's why the damage that was done to the floor, that they're, they're paying for the maintenance on that. But I believe like the infrastructure part is us.
Correct.
So if we wanted to install a...
Recirculation pump.
I think that would be on us, from my understanding, at least their understanding of the situation.
Yeah, my, my only concern with that is when we talked to Dylan and Jeff Dunn, they said that it was cost prohibitive at this point to redo it. I don't want to ask for people's tax dollars and then throw it away on that when the, the true nature of this was for the swimming pool and to have the swimming pool open, that's my only fear.
That's fine, I was, like I said, I was just thinking and throwing it out there.
So I, for me, I don't want to include the splash pad.
Yeah, that's totally fair.
So it would be the baby pool?
Baby pool. Baby pool and regular pool.
That's it?
Yeah.
I agree.
Yeah.
The whole pool building?
Yeah, the whole aquatic facility of the pool. Yeah, and I'll tell you, if members of the public during the three readings have anything to say, we can always send it back to committee to get it, you know, changed. If they, maybe the general public really wants the splash pad included, I doubt they would, but you never know, so... Okay, so, Mr. Me, your motion is requesting legislation authorizing and directing the law director to prepare ballot language, requesting a .065% income tax levy, commencing on January 1st, 2026, for a period of four years, for the maintenance, upkeep, chemicals, staffing, and any other associated fees and expenses to run the swimming pool in Almiler Park.
Yes, that's my motion, so moved.
I'll second.
All right. I have a motion by Mr. Me, and a second by Mrs. DeShawn. Any further discussion?
No.
If not, Mr. Me.
Yes.
Mr. Moritz.
Yes.
Mrs. DeShawn.
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Are there any open projects that you wish discussed, Mr. Me?
No, I'm good.
Mr. Moritz?
Yes, there is actually.
I knew that was coming.
Thought you were gonna get her, didn't you?
Yeah.
On the waterline, expansion outside city, underneath that part in our packets, 717, 2018, we're, it's amended, 913-02 has been amended, so that could be taken off of there.
Okay.
Also, 94, 2020, 2018 has been amended, that would be, that's not even in there anymore. That doesn't exist anymore, so that's, that could be taken off, it's 951-01, and, let's see, 1215, 2020, 15-04 has been repealed, it no longer exists, so that one could be taken off there too, as far as that goes.
Did you catch all those, Miranda? Can you get with her to give us?
Yeah, I'll get with her.
There, you're all on this.
Anything else, Mr. Moritz?
No, that's it.
Mrs. DeShawn?
Yes. We have got to discuss this progress, best of all. We haven't done anything on that.
The city, the administration has come to an agreement with them for a fee, and...
Oh, we're not doing any legislation?
No, we decided that was administrative function.
Oh. Okay. When did we decide that? I mean, we did that in committee, we decided that that...
Three months ago?
Yeah, a couple months ago.
Okay.
Anything else?
No.
I'm gonna ask if I have any support from the committee to remove the discussion of the out-of-town tax credit from the open project.
I'm glad you brought it up, because I would like to have it removed. Actually, I have a list of stuff the administration and we as a body can do, not this time, I don't want to bring it up, because I want to wait till at the end of June before I bring this up. Yes, the stuff that could be talked about with the administration, or administration can talk about it, things that we can do, I got a whole list of stuff that we can go through before we ever have to touch it.
Well, yeah, I agree. So I'd like that removed, and I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Mr. Me? Mr. Moritz?
No, I'm good. No more discussion.
No.
I'm asking for a vote to remove it.
Oh, vote for remove it, I thought we did that right, yeah. Vote to remove it, sorry.
It's DeShawn.
I got ahead of myself.
I did hear that. Yes.
I got ahead of myself.
And I'm also, yes, so that has been removed. Auditor, anything else from you?
No.
All right. Public participation.
Adam Frisell, AV passage, I would just call on you guys to potentially commit to some sort of moratorium when you're considering the levy for the repairs and the funding for the pool. I know that we don't want to necessarily tie the concept of the pool and the splash pad together because of the ownership and the infrastructure, there's issues tied to that, that creates drama. But I think we've heard from a lot of citizens here at the podium that express frustration, and I think you guys are aware of, the amount of money that's wasted in the splash pad. The last estimate, I think I heard from the body up here, was something around $50,000 a year?
It's 2 million gallons of water a year goes flushed down through there.
And the last time, I think we heard from...
The pool has about 3 million.
I think we're equally frustrated with that.
Yeah, I think that, to me, the last numbers that I recall hearing was around $50,000 a year in water that goes down the drain, when the recirculator pump was estimated around $75,000 for the installation. I could be wrong there, but I think that's what, the numbers that I recall. I don't think it makes sense to me that it would only take a year and a half of paying for the water to pay for the pump, and so if it's that close to being able to afford it, I think we're also aware of the leaks at the pool, and how much water goes there, and I think, I remember hearing that was in the 10s per year in the leaks to the pool. So I would just call on you guys to make a public statement, committing to perhaps a moratorium for, if that does pass, that levy, perhaps to take half of that funding for the first year to fix the leak in the pool and install the recirculator pump, which would then generate up to, upwards of $80,000 in savings per year, so that the citizens that don't want to pay for the splash pad would be more encouraged to vote yes on the levy.
To your point, my thought on that would be, we would be replacing money in the general fund that we normally ran the pool with. I'm thinking if that, this is able to pass, then the general fund could fix that splash pad in year number one. And I still don't want to use tax levy money to do that, but I think the city, so I'm gonna go on the record and say, if I'm around and able to be part of that decision-making process, absolutely, I'm gonna push for the city to fix that problem, based on what you had just said. So I'm on the record.
As I said, I would call for you to make a public announcement, so that the city is aware on a broader scale when you're promoting the levy, if it does come to a pass, when you are promoting it, to make a very public campaign to commit to replacing and repairing those two things, if it does, so that the public, I think it would create more positive faith in the movement.
Message received.
Thank you.
And Mr. Myers?
Yes.
Along those lines, too, I believe the splash pad is also, the state gets involved with that, when we change that.
Yeah, you'd have to go through engineering costs and stuff.
Yeah, engineering costs.
We'd have to go through that.
The state would actually have to be involved in that, too, not just our local.
Yep. Mr. White?
Greg White, 1125 Hill Crest Drive. So basically, and myself and Tommy Starner had a conversation about this before he left, he basically stated it was gonna cost for the .065, was gonna cost about $32.99 for somebody around $75,000 in income, okay? So basically, that's about, per year, and that was basically gonna be like about $2.15 a month. And then he said that for somebody around $100,000 in income tax being paid, it was gonna be roughly estimated, he figured it out, is $36, so that's about $3 a month. The only problem that I understand is, I wanted a property tax, and that's probably gonna be voted on in November, and we're probably not gonna have property tax after the end of this year. And I agree, it's gonna have to be an income tax, but as some people have told me here in the last week, is that some people don't pay income tax, okay? At all, okay? A lot of people do not pay income tax in the city. You only have, what, roughly about 4,000 people that pay taxes here, it's income tax in City Bucyrus. So, give or take, okay? So the thing is, I would like to also propose that we look at a property assessment, okay? I think Kaylee already knows what I'm talking about, okay? This is a way to assess every property in the city of Bucyrus, to make everybody pay the same, okay? And it actually is cheaper than the income tax, and it actually will raise more money, because property taxes went up. Basically, roughly, depending on how you formulate it, okay, on an assessment, which is allowed by state law, okay, is that it probably would only cost people $40, a property owner, no matter what, and it would be a flat fee, is what it is.
Is that still voted on by the public?
Actually, I don't think it has to be voted, because it's a property assessment.
And if they do away with property tax, the assessments will still prevail?
From what I understand, under the current bill, that under, because it is not a property tax, it is a property assessment fee. Kaylee can divulge, and you can look into more about that. Yeah, I know.
I know the utility department, so we tend to get to, I call them property tax checks a year, one in March, and then one in, I believe, August, and we give a report, we get a report from the utility office for assessments. So, I don't, I'm not an expert on it, but I think I'm picking up what you're putting down, and I will reach out to Robin Sheets to see if I can pull a little more information on it, okay?
Yeah, that's what I need, because without the numbers, it's no good. You know, you gotta have all the facts and figures and stuff like that, but I'm just proposing that.
I want to learn more about it, and if it looks like a better option, we can always...
Because it actually is gonna, actually, I think it's gonna be cheaper in the long run, and then basically, everybody pays for it, okay, including businesses. Everybody pays for it. And the thing is, is that it would be free, it could still be written in the language of the legislation, that it's free to get a, yeah, pool card, or whatever, and whatever information you want to put on that card, and stuff like that. Because, like I said, property taxes are gonna be, we're probably gonna have to pay me after, what, June of next year, because we're six months in the rears. So if it goes into effect January 1, your last property tax payment will be in June, the end of June next year, hopefully. All right. Second of all, I think it's time, and I'm glad Chris brought this up, and I've been a starch component about this, I think it's time to really sit down and talk about the budget. What and when this committee is going to start looking at ways of saving money? Where can we start at? We're not saving any money, we're spending like crazy, but we're not filling the coffers back in, okay? So, why aren't we looking at cuts at services? What can, what is in the best interest of the taxpayer, okay, of this community, okay? We need to put money back in to all these funds and build them back up, instead of keep on spending, and spending, and spending, okay? There's ways, and I agree with Chris, there are ways to cut. Now, is everybody gonna like them? Probably not, you know? But there has to be give and take in everything, you know? Not everybody's gonna like everything, you know? And that's just my viewpoint. Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Any other public participation?
Clarissa Slater, 3645 State Route 4, the only thing...
Yeah, I was gonna say that.
Yeah, it's literally 30 seconds. Someone had said that their concern was with it being an income tax, that individuals who pay income tax to Bucyrus be allowed to also get a pass.
Absolutely. And that's, I think that would fall under legal, any, anybody whose tax money is going to something. And so that's where I brought up the idea, too, when I talked to Lisa today, that anybody who's entitled to that can come up and get a pass.
Okay.
They just have to somehow prove, show her documentation, or whatever, that's for them to figure out on the administrative side, but yeah.
Yeah, that was a concern that was brought up, so...
So, a kid here in Bucyrus has a friend in Nevada, and they decided to go to the pool here, are you gonna charge the kid for Nevada?
We have to make that decision. We could make it free for everybody, and I don't, I think that's probably an administrative decision at the end of the day, but...
We'll probably make it back in candy.
Well, and that's, that's the thing, that when Tommy and I talked about it, I said, you know, we talked about that very thing, and those people, even if they're coming here, they're gonna spend money in the concession stand, so we're gonna generate revenue from them that way. The problem that I'm worried about, if you open it up free to everybody, and the people, you know, Marion, and Crestline, and wherever else say, "Oh, it's free, let's pack the car up and bring," and all of a sudden, with the first 40 minutes, the place is open, you're overrun with out-of-town people, and then our city people are turned away, because we've hit our capacity for the day. I don't want that to happen either, so I think that the people who are paying a tax...
You really think it's gonna be that popular?
Oh, yeah.
Because we need to open up a Starbucks.
People are looking for things to do with their families, and when it's something that's free...
And can I say, that was one of my worries about the, if we open up to absolutely everybody, the increase, if we have to hire a lot more lifeguards, too, because you have to keep certain numbers for the amount of people coming to the pool.
But you can't just let the doorkeeper evolve, and there comes a point where there's a capacity number, and we have to turn people away, and that's a fear of mine, that we're turning local tax-paying families away, if we're allowing out-of-town people. So we gotta, that's all something that remains to be seen and worked out.
Crestline no longer has a pool?
Nope, they don't.
Moreover has a pool.
Nevada got rid of their pool.
Nevada got rid of their pool, so that's...
My, there are good questions for you. Like the one guy said, McKevers, McKevers is messing up, like I said, McKevers came down and surveyed the fence, all that. McKevers also is the engineering of the city. Why can't McKevers forfeit the money to fix the splash pad, since he should have engineered that splash pad before he got it put in?
They were employed by the city, and the administration that was in office at that time gave them direction, and they did what they were hired to do.
But him being an engineer, should've known.
The city was given those, the administration at the time was given those two options, and they chose what we have now.
But you know what I'm saying, him being the engineer, he can say, "Oh, no, this is the way it's done."
He did. They presented both options, so the engineer didn't make any mistakes, they did what they were hired to do.
Well, see, I thought, the way guy was explaining it, it's like, so it's mainly the city's fault.
You could say that. Any other public participation? Seeing none, we will adjourn at 8:34 PM.